We'll now convene the Board of Trustees Regular Meeting for Thursday, August 17, 2017. The time is 7:05. Please call the roll.
President Self.
Here.
Trustee Pollak.
Here.
Trustee Gisa.
Here.
Trustee Ballerine.
Here.
Trustee Settavi.
Here.
Trustee Peters.
(coughing) Trustee Peters.
Village Manager Frances.
Here.
Village Attorney Malina.
Here.
Also present Village Clerk Haley, absent trustee Lumston.
Thank you. If you'd please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome to everyone who's here tonight and those watching at home. If you are here with us and you'd like to make a comment at any point, I ask that you be recognized by the President and that you make your comments from the podium so that the folks at home can hear and see what you have to say. First up is public comment. Anyone like to address the board? Heen none will move on to reports of village officers. Before I get into the formalities, if you're watching at home or if you're here, you might notice that we're sitting behind some really beautiful new conference tables. And I just want to take a second to tell you a little bit about the story of these tables. And I commend to you a great article in The Landmark written by Mr. Up Hughes that tells a fuller story. These tables are made out of wood from a tree, an oak tree that fell in the village last year after a windstorm. It was a 160-year-old oak tree. And it had rot at the base, but the rest of the tree was in good enough shape that we were able to salvage it. And then our village forester was able to find someone who could actually mill it, create lumber out of it, and then a woodworker, a man named Paul Meyer, who designed and built these beautiful tables. So we are sitting at tables that were made out of a tree that was a sapling when Frederick Homestead walked these streets. So it's a remarkable little story. They're going to serve the village for generations to come, so it's a great honor to sit at them and be a little part of Riverside history. So thank you to Mike Collins and our village staff and everybody who helped make it possible. So first up is a motion to appoint Kate Coffey to the Economic Development Commission to fill a vacancy. Her term to expire in 2020. I ask for a motion and a second. By Mr. Ballerine, second by Mr. Setteby. Any comments? Some of you will know Kate as Queen Twist of Chocolate Twist, so she brings not only her entrepreneurial sensibilities and skills, but also a wonderful spirit and dedication to our village. So I think she's going to make a wonderful addition to the Economic Development Commission. So I'd ask you to call the roll.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Gisa.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Setteby.
Aye.
Trustee Peters.
Motion carries. Next up is a motion to appoint Ed Hannan to the Planning and Zoning Commission to fill a vacancy. His term to expire 2020. Motion and a second, please.
So.
Motion by Mr. Gisa, second by, excuse me. I'm losing my voice here, Ms. Peters. I'm in day six of a summer cold, so I'll see if my voice makes it tonight. So Mr. Hannan's only downfall was Mr. Setteby was one of his references, but I look past that.
Like the record show.
(laughing) So he brings a wealth of legal and business experience. I think he'll make a wonderful addition to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Please call the roll.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Gisa.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Setteby.
Aye.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is just a matter of business. This is the appointment of the trustee liaisons to our commissions. They are as follow: the Board of Police and Fire Commissioners, Trustee Setteby; Economic Development Commission, Trustee Peters; Historical, Trustee Lumston; Landscape Advisory, Trustee Pollak; Parks and Recreation Board, Trustee Gisa; Planning and Zoning Commission and Police Pension Board are both Mr. Setteby; Preservation Commission, Trustee Lumston; and Riverside TV, Trustee Ballerine. So we appreciate your service in addition to your time here as the liaisons to those commissions. And that, the only other thing I guess I'd like to say is I want to say a couple thank yous to all the people that went out and worked in some pretty hard conditions down in Swan Pond over the last few weeks, putting in the first installment of what will eventually be a beautiful wetland area down there. Walked down through there today, and there were a lot of plants planted. So if you were one of the many volunteers who helped, we really appreciate that. And that's all I have. Manager Frances.
I just have one item. I guess Chief Lightlet to come up to the podium to discuss further with regard to the Riverside Police Department and the partnership that they've created with Lyft.
Sure. Mr. President, trustees, and manager Frances, that idea, or at least the idea for a partnership, was actually brought to me by Brian Greenowall when he stopped in my office one day and said that he had been seeing more and more residents and non-residents using either Uber or Lyft and just wanted me to know that when they would go to a restaurant or a bar and the bartenders were trying to help somebody get home and they needed the police assistance, that they would come and the person would get on their app and Uber or Lyft would be there in three minutes. And he said it was a really, really good, you know, way to do that. And so he asked my permission if the midnight officers could tell people, patrons who drink too much, that they could leave their cars on the street until somebody could come pick them up and we wouldn't ticket them if they could get home safely. And I said, of course, we would do that. You know, that's the least we could do to get somebody home safe. Well, then I reached out to Uber and Lyft, and on the same day I called them, never heard from Uber. Lyft called me back by the end of the day. I called them about 9:00 in the morning. By 4:00, they called me back, told me they had a corporate office here in Chicago, and that was part of their mission. And what was I looking for? And I told them what I was looking for, and one of their executives said, "Consider it done." And I said, "Well, what does that mean, 'consider it done'?" He goes, "We'll print tickets for you," which are business cards. "We'll put a code in there that patrons can use, and we'll ship those to you. We'll start with 1,000, and you can replenish them. We'll handle all the media if you'd like us to do. We have a professional media staff here. We'll handle it all. We'll do it all. We'll call you for the approval, and we'll continuously supply you with those cards, depending on how much, you know, you use." And they just asked for how I was going to distribute it. I said, "My idea was to staple it to the bond for individuals we arrest, so next time they don't have to be arrested," because we do run across, you know, repeat offenders. And the thing that we have a lot of is when we arrest a DUI suspect, there's usually people in the car, and they're also intoxicated. And what the officers do now is they bring them into the police station in the lobby and they try to get them a ride home. Or some people don't want to come in with us, they just start walking, which is not a good thing at 3:00 in the morning when they're intoxicated. So we're able now to give the passengers this card, they can get the discount from Lyft, and they'll come pick them up right there. And then we're also going to be distributing them to the area businesses that serve liquor. So, and a follow-up from that, they've been delivered. We've distributed them. The officers have them in their squad car. They're in the booking room for bonding, and by Friday, by tomorrow, our local businesses will have them. We just asked them, we went out and asked them how many they would like, and they told us how many they would like, and they'll be delivered tomorrow. So I think it's a really good partnership. The Lyft executive told me it's the first partnership in Illinois. It's not their first one in the nation. They have two other larger communities. I think one of them was Seattle where they've done this partnership, but it's the first agency that reached out to Lyft. And their executive told me, "We're so happy you reached out to us. This is part of our mission. We just don't get a lot of police departments calling us for this type of, you know, program." But it is really part of their mission, so, man, I'm really happy that we're able to do that and provide that service.
And it's so nice to have the, just the police be in, the business to be proactive, you know? And it always seems like it's, you know, when you see police, it's punitive. This, you're trying to help people. You're trying, and, I mean, you always try to help people, don't get me wrong, but you're trying to keep them out of trouble on a really, I think, a real professional level. I just think it's a great idea. I'm not saying it right, but I think it's a great idea, and I applaud Officer Greenowall and yourself for doing it, and I applaud Lyft. I'll drop Uber off my apps and put Lyft on.
All right. Well, thank you very much. I dare, I gotta say, they immediately responded to me. So, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, they have a really good corporate model. I mean, they were, they were, opened the door for us and said, "What can we do to assist you?" So they were really good. Thank you.
That is all I have for this evening.
Next up is the approval of the consent agenda. Are there any items anybody needs to review for discussion? So the following is the consent agenda for this meeting: approval of voucher list of bills for August 17, 2017, and file and review the following: the village board trustees' public hearing and regular meeting minutes of August 3; historical commission meeting minutes of June 19; landscape advisory commission meeting minutes of June 13; preservation commission regular meeting minutes of June 8; preservation commission special meeting of July 13; preservation commission special subcommittee meeting of July 26; community development department monthly report of July 2017; the finance department monthly report of July 2017; the fire department monthly report of July 2017; and the mid-year crime index memo and summary report. Also on the consent agenda is a motion to approve the special event application for Corey's Kids Triathlon and a resolution authorizing the village manager to purchase, to issue a purchase order to Lyons View for four light poles and fixtures for the Forest Avenue Bridge in an amount not to exceed $28,292. I'd ask for a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. By Mr. Gisa, second by Ms. Peters. Please call the roll.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Gisa.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Setteby.
Aye.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is, under ordinances and resolutions, is an ordinance imposing a business district retailer's occupation tax and a business district service occupation tax within the boundaries of Riverside Harlem Avenue Business District Number One. Ms. Frances.
Just to refresh the board's memory, on February 16th of 2017, the village board approved the creation of the Harlem Avenue Business District Number One. As part of that discussion, the board wanted staff to come back with regard to the imposition of the business district tax for that district. And on July 5th, 2017, and July 12th, 2017, staff made sure that there were appropriate publications related to public notice. Additionally, we also provided notice to business owners in the area of the said business district. Included in the packet is a map of the businesses that are impacted, and it is also inclusive. Dr. Normati during the public hearing had mentioned the parcels, but did not realize that there is also a gas station that is inclusive just south of Long Common Road. If approved, sales tax proceeds from the business district will be placed into a special fund that is created by approving the ordinance titled the Harlem Avenue Business District Number One Business District Tax Allocation Fund. The proceeds in the fund will be used for the purpose of paying business district project costs and obligations as set forth in the business district plan. The proceeds in the funds are specifically allocated to what the business district cost is at the discretion of the village. If the board decides to impose such a tax, these monies would then be utilized to reinvest in the business district and can be imposed for up to 23 years. It is also important to note that the sales tax rate would not increase until July 1st of 2018. However, the ordinance must be approved and filed with Illinois Department of Revenue by October 1st, 2017.
Just, you misspoke one. It'll be January 1st, 2018, is when the increase would go into effect. You said July.
Oh, I apologize.
Yeah, so it's January 1st. So I'd ask for a motion to approve an ordinance imposing a business district retailer's occupation tax and a business district service occupation tax within the boundaries of Riverside Harlem Avenue Business District Number One.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Pollak.
Second.
Second by Mr. Setteby. Discussion, please.
Could you go over just for, would you do this, or would you do this, exactly what the tax would be on? I mean, I know it's in our packet, but...
Sure. I can go over it, and if I miss anything, I'd ask the village attorney Lance Malina to make additional comments as necessary. But essentially, the 1% sales tax would be on retail sales and occupational, occupation or service occupational tax. And essentially, what that comes out to be is retail sales is essentially any type of business that is selling things for resale. So for example, you have a Starbucks over there, that would, that would apply, that 1% business district tax. If you have a retail store that opens up over there, that would, the 1% would apply. If it's a service, so say we had a mechanic that opened up a shop over there, it wouldn't be the 1% on his service and labor, but any parts that were part of that service that he had to purchase as part of those repairs, the sales tax would apply on that particular component, which is small in comparison. But then those monies would then be utilized to then be reinvested in the district. So if individuals such as developers were interested, to speak to what Dr. Normati had mentioned about different incentives, those monies could be utilized to then offset capital costs. They could be reimbursed over time essentially to a developer.
And do we have the authority to, tonight, to alter the boundaries of the business district, or is it as set?
As I know it, they are set.
If we can't alter it tonight, we'd have to go back and re-adopt. Amend the business districts. It has a legal description.
And there was a study.
Correct. It was backed up by a study, and, right. It would be, it's basically starting over. The whole process would have to be followed to amend it.
We've got a couple questions. Please call the roll.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Gisa.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
No.
Trustee Setteby.
Aye.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is an ordinance amending sections 861 Water Meter Regulations and 862 Water Service Accounts and Charges of the Village Code of the Village of Riverside, Illinois Relative to Water and Hydrant Meters. Ms. Johns.
This is a little bit of staff cleanup of the village code. The deposits were increased for the meters, just to make sure that we're covering our costs. Also, staff and the village engineer worked to upgrade the language regarding the materials used in the water and sewer connections.
I'd ask for a motion to adopt an ordinance amending sections 861 and 862 of the Village Code of the Village of Riverside, Illinois Relative to Water and Hydrant Meters. By Mr. Ballerine, so, second by Mr. Gisa, first by Mr. Pollak.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Gisa.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Setteby.
Aye.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next is an ordinance amending various sections of Title 8 Public Ways and Property, Chapter 7 Village Sewage System of the Village Code of the Village of Riverside, Illinois. Ms. Johns.
Again, this was just a little bit of code cleanup, upgrading most of the pipes to PVC instead of clay pipes, and again, with the connections.
So I'd ask for a motion to adopt an ordinance amending various sections of Title 8, Chapter 7 of the Village Code of the Village of Riverside, Illinois.
I'll move.
Motion by Mr. Pollak.
Second.
Second by Mr. Gisa. Please call the roll.
Trustee Pollak.
Aye.
Trustee Gisa.
Aye.
Trustee Ballerine.
Aye.
Trustee Setteby.
Aye.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Motion carries. Moving on now to considerations, this is a continued discussion of the Village of Riverside Capital Improvement Plan spanning the fiscal years 2018 to 2027. Ms. Johns.
This is a continuation of the capital improvement plan discussions. There's a couple items in the packet last time that the board asked us to research a little further and include a little bit more information. So if we would like to go through those, the first item that was requested a little bit more information on was the implementation of an ERP, of an upgrade of our current ERP system for the village. As I spoke last time, we're kind of in our infancy in the planning and demos of these products, but I included several of the demo sheets from the different modules that we're looking at.
So I did have a question about this one, because last time I thought we were talking more in terms of replacing it with a new system. This memo seems to suggest that there's an opportunity that we might be able to upgrade our existing system at a much reduced cost. Can you address those two options?
Absolutely. First, we are looking to see if we can accomplish what we need to by upgrading our current system that would be the most cost-effective for us, and it would be the way that we'd be able to retain the most data in the migration process. So that's what we're currently demoing now. We've demoed the online utility billing portion of it, as well as the financial section, and so far are very happy with those. The next pieces that we have to do are the more difficult pieces, is demoing products that would help interface with code enforcement into our cash collection system and see what we can do to integrate some of the police ticketing into the cash collection system. So those demos are still to come, but our hope would be to upgrade if possible.
So if we were able to upgrade, would that, would that also address the, like, the Parks and Recreation needs that we talked about last time as well?
That would be a separate software system. We have demoed the ENCODE product, which is our current financial software, and that was not recommended out of that discussion. Upgrading the current rec-track system will be more beneficial to the Recreation Department.
Other questions about this item?
I think, back to some of the discussions we had before, I appreciate the need, understand the need. I don't think what we have in front of us is more of a cost-benefit analysis than we were kind of looking for to determine if this type of expenditure is necessary. I'm not closing the door to supporting this type of expenditure, but I think for now, I would propose that we put in the budget an upgrade cost, and then if we need to replace, we have further discussion here. I just know how these things show up in the consent agenda, and if it's in the budget for 350, we're probably going to approve it, and I don't, I don't want to fall into that trap. And I want to have the burden of proof on staff to demonstrate the need to replace versus upgrade or find something less than this type of expenditure.
Did they give you an ROI from historical?
Some of the modules individually did. For instance, utility billing, they, one company said that they saw a 30% to 45% improvement in collections for water shut-offs. Another, in their billing, by switching to phone calls versus certified mailings, saved 90% as far as that fee. So I have a lot of smaller information on different modules, but have been unable to kind of compile it just into a straight return on investment.
And then with the migration, I mean, the migration can be very expensive from, like, a labor perspective. So do they, do they include the migration in with the, well, the upgrade you wouldn't need it, but with the new system, do they include the migration in there of the data?
That is included in my estimate for fees. Also is on hardware cost. In upgrading from our current ENCODE system to ENCODE 10, which is a web-based system, there is some migration costs in that, but that is included in that lower number. One of the projects that our new management analyst is currently working on is an inventory of all of our software systems village-wide to see where efficiencies can be made and where our systems can talk to each other to make staff more efficient. That will be presented before moving forward with an ERP system upgrade.
Is there one more question, sir? So the firm that we're currently using that you're talking about upgrading says that they're using cloud, it's a private cloud environment, correct?
Yes.
So is that about, is that, are there storage fees in addition to the software license? And/or is it also available in a public cloud like AWS or Azure?
It's a private cloud solution.
Yeah.
And that isn't rolled into their new license fees.
It is rolled in?
Mm-hmm.
And is there storage fees on top of that, or no?
No.
And how long do you think it's going to take before you get that, what you just, with the program, where she's going to see what talks and what doesn't talk? Because she's obviously just started that.
Yes.
So I'm wondering if, my point is, are we premature with even looking at this for 20, for 2018? I mean, is this really something that we should be looking at as a 2019 expenditure rather than, because can we really make the decision like this in the next two months?
I think her analysis can be done within the next two months of our current systems.
Additionally, there's clearly a waiting list for an upgrade for our current system. So at least committing to some level to ENCODE so that we maintain our place on the waiting list is important. Now, if we choose to opt for another software solution, I think there's the flexibility and latitude, but we don't want to necessarily preclude ourselves from not being on that list, because I believe it's, the lag time now is 18 months at this point.
Mm-hmm.
So there are certain things that we could implement incrementally so that there wouldn't be a full one-time payment all at once, plus just staff time. We have pretty limited staff, just generally speaking, so being able to do training, implementation, and what have you, I mean, that's going to be, have to be done in phases as well.
So then, does this, if we do the ENCODE system, is it realistic that we would spend this kind of money in one fiscal year, or it would be probably spread out over 2018 and 2019? Because it would take 18 months to get started and...
It's all a timing of billing and implementation and what their contract rates. So as we move closer, if this is the product that we choose, then obviously they would provide a certain phasing presumably for implementation of the project and then also payment as well. So until we get closer to that point in time, it's hard to say. There is a great likelihood that, yes, it would span over potentially even three fiscal years. But once we know how much we've implemented during the first phase of it, then we can budget accordingly for future fiscal years.
Could we only, is it only one entity that is providing this information or these numbers? Did we, did we get any quotes from anyone else, or can they, anyone else even provide this?
There are several different vendors that could provide an ERP system. However, upgrading our current system would be approximately a third of the cost of rolling out an entirely new system.
For the other vendors?
If we went to other vendors or other product, software systems.
Okay. So this is the cheapest, I guess you could say, way to upgrade?
Yes.
So the $330,000, so that's including migration fees, what's the license fee?
I don't have that information, because that would be from other vendors.
Good. I mean, it would definitely be good to know, know the breakdown of the migration fees versus the actual license fees. Can we get that information?
I would have to choose a couple different companies to get quotes from, but I could, I could select a couple.
But that would be only if we went to a new system.
I would say we should continue on the track of trying to upgrade and seeing if that fulfills our, fulfills our need rather than...
I mean, that seems, that seems pretty obvious, that if we can, if we can go that route and satisfy our needs for 125, that's preferable.
If we won't know for 18 months, will we know?
We would conduct more demos of this system within the next month or two, so we would know by then whether this upgraded system would fit our needs or not.
Okay. I mean, I do, you know, this, I really appreciate this additional information, but I kind of share what Mr. Setteby's saying, you know, for this kind of expenditure. I mean, I would like to see a little bit more, a little bit more analysis of actual cost savings for the village, to Mr. Gisa's point. And then also, I'd like to see the results of what our analyst is doing with regard to the overview of our other systems. I think we need that information before the trustees can make a reasoned decision on this.
Okay.
Is the board fine with us bringing it back to them as part of the budget process? So it gives us additional time to do additional...
Yeah. But I think that the desire that I'm seeing up here is to really focus on the upgrade angle instead of trying to go for a new system. So if we can pursue that more. Okay. What's next?
The next, we provided some information, or we decreased the facade program to 15,000, and then we included some photos of the bike plan structures and locations. And then we included some photos of the bike plan structures and locations.
So I, I know people at home can't see this, but this, this would be the, this is the design for the bike racks themselves that would go around town. And let's see, where's the photograph of the, and I'm sure you're not going to be able to see this, but this is photograph of the two shelters, the covered bike shelters that we're contemplating. And one would be on the north side of the tracks and one would be on the south, south side of the tracks.
Whereabouts, because there's, it seems like both sides of the tracks are, have shelters already.
Currently, what most people are doing is parking their bikes along the railing underneath the platform, right at the edge of the platform. That is not necessarily the desired location for people to be parking their bikes. It's attached to the railing along there. Previously, bikes were parked where the visitor's center now is and they got booted to create a visitor's center. And so the racks were moved outside of the pavilion. So this, and we definitely noticed a marked increase in the number of bikes then being parked along that south platform, or sorry, north platform. So the idea is to provide an opportunity where it seems to be preferable that people want, when they're commuting to park their bikes under something so they're not out in the elements. So the idea is to provide something on both the north and the south side of the street as possible that's covered for people to be able to park their bikes.
And they would be on the platform?
They would not be on the platform. The one would be in, it is railroad right of way that we lease, but it would be located kind of near Riverside Plumbing, right as you're going into that parking lot over there. The, the walkway comes out and meets the, the parking lot that's for the business parking back there. There's an area where there's bike racks currently. We would take out those bike racks, put in the shelter and then have the new bike racks inside of that shelter for people to be able to use. The other location we're considering is right near parking lot one. So as you're coming up that ramp that comes up to the, to the station, it would be right there along that, along that sidewalk ramp that comes up on the parking lot. So they would be more commuter focused, the shelters would be.
So a lot of people use the one at Riverside Plumbing?
Zero people actually park their bikes over there.
I'm just wondering if people are going to start using it now because it looks like it's a little out of the way, if I'm being honest.
Right.
So my concern would be if we invest in the shelter and nobody really knows it's there or nobody really uses it because it's not as convenient as the railing, then we seem to be just putting it in something for no reason.
Right. Well, I think hopefully if we advertise that it's there, and again, I think part of the problem is, is the bike racks that we do have are not necessarily the preferred bike racks for people to use. It is near the platform, it is on the north side of the tracks. I do see plenty of people walking in that area. So I'm kind of hoping that drawing some attention to it and the fact that it's covered will help encourage more people to utilize that area.
What about the two spots, what about the, again, where the end of, there's, it used to be that, there's a spot where the, that cab used to sit all the time? It's kind of that little bump out? Right here? I, I, I just think if we kept it closer to where you're at the crossing, you're going to get people to use them more. Otherwise, people, I, I just don't know if people are going to go all the way over there and then walk down this way. So I, I always, you know, this, this, that little, it's part of the street. And the best I can say is it used to be where that cab guy used to sit. And the other part would be, the other one I would say would be one of the parking spots where the Bryant, or not Bryant, whatever the guy's name was, it used to be the, the railroad ticket guy, used to be inside there. He had three spots there, one of those three spots.
That is a possibility. We are looking at redoing that area as part of the streetscape, the Quincy Streetscape Improvement Project. So I don't think we had necessarily envisioned there being a shelter right there at the intersection.
Well, there's three spots. Then it would be at the intersection, it would be closest to the, to the train. I'd just like to get people as, I mean, for people to use them, they, it's, these two spots just seem like it's going to be trying to teach an old dog new tricks.
This is true.
They're too far away.
So I, I mean, our dogs don't chain very well in this town. So I'd like to keep it as close to where they're used to parking if we, if we can try to work that out. And just, it's, it's my...
Is there not room along that railing on the platform? Or can we not, I guess, we'd have to do something?
Yeah, there's not really room to put rack, like official racks in over in that area just between the columns and the benches and stuff that are in that area. It's fairly tight to be, to be putting in a rack, you know, like a U rack that people would use.
Mr. Pollard?
I, I agree. We should try to locate them as close as possible and as conveniently as possible and look for, for ways, places for that. Couple of questions. One is, how many bikes would each shelter accommodate?
The one that we are looking at on the north side of the tracks, the room availability there would probably only be able to accommodate about, I want to say five racks, so that would be ten bikes versus the one that was on the south side of the tracks near parking lot one. We could do a larger shelter in that area because there's a little bit more room to accommodate it. So that could accommodate seven to eight racks. So you're looking at about sixteen bikes.
Okay. Follow up question. Would we prohibit people from parking their bikes on the rail, rail where they have been?
If I could figure out a way to do it, I would, yes.
A sign saying no bike parking? Bike parking that way? Seems to be an effective way. I mean, because it's a problem, I mean, you said it's, and I can see where it's aesthetically unattractive and maybe it gets in people's way when they're parked on the railing. So people may want to actually use the railing for what its purpose is. So I think we should consider at least encouraging it, if not requiring it or prohibiting it from...
I was definitely thinking signage to try to help encourage people to find more appropriate locations for their bikes.
So I kind of agree with, I agree with Trusty, Trusty Peters. Is it absolutely necessary? When, when I think about someone commuting to the city and they ride their bike, they're going to want to ride, park their bike under a shelter where they're going to actually board the plant, the train. So if it's the morning and they're going to go on the train, they're not going to want to walk a half a block to get to the train station. So is, have we discussed possibly putting bike racks, decorative bike racks under the over, under the overhang that's there now? And it's only ten bikes is why, I mean, that's not that many bikes.
There was some discussion by the Preservation Commission as we were going through the process on this, and there was a little bit of pushback on permanently mounting bike racks under the covered areas on the south side, you know, the main train station area, just because that is utilized for different events and they could get in the way and make it harder to, to utilize for things like HopFest or other RAW, things like that, that it might be incorporated into part of theirs. So they started to move away from trying to accommodate the same thing with racks under there. Always something that we can readdress. I'm not opposed to it, but that was kind of the thing, the thought process that was happening, you know, with the Preservation Commission as we were working towards this. We were all trying to figure out how, how can we get this as close as possible to the tracks? So we were looking at the possibility of maybe taking some of the spaces that are in that parking lot right along the platform, behind like metal lights and everything. There are some spaces there that are underutilized, but they are reserved for bank parking and we can't utilize them. And at this point, we are not at a point where they are willing to grant those spaces back to us to be able to utilize. But nobody uses the spaces that are all the way to the east along there. And the thought had been that it would be a good, that would be a perfect place because there's a staircase that goes right up to the platform. That's where everybody boards. That could be an ideal location, but it's just not something that was feasible within the parameters that we had, so.
Because I, you know, I, I had had the thought too on the two ends of the, of the platform itself. And I, you know, I, I don't really buy this thing that somehow it would interfere with, with events because we're, we're mostly, mostly talking about commuter traffic. And, I mean, we have those both ends of the platform that are covered, are not used. I mean, the only thing we now, we have some, we, I, I guess they're antiques, but we have some kind of old wagon sitting up there of questionable, you know, where it came from. I don't even know what's up there. But I would, I would encourage us to reconsider that. I mean, it makes sense to me to, to have both because not, not everybody's going to be able to lug their bike up the stairs to lock it away underneath the, on the upper level. So I could see having one, I think the ideal spot is where, is where Trusty Ballard is talking about, where the, where the municipal parking spots are right now. And if we do redo that area, which I hope we do, we could just incorporate the, the bike rack into the design. But I think we should look, because I can see a very simple rail on both ends of that, of the, the train station where you could accommodate twenty bikes on either end and then have one at ground level for folks who, you know, for one reason or another couldn't, couldn't get their bike up, up top.
The plan for the improvements did, did include having bike racks in that area, but it didn't include a shelter, so.
Because people, that, that's where they're, to get out of the rain, that's where they're taking their bikes anyway. So we might as, why don't, let's just, why don't we accommodate what people's natural tendencies are and give them a good place to put them?
If, if the issue is they get in the way for events, we should have racks that are removable for events. So a couple of people can pick them up.
Well, I don't think the racks themselves would ever be in the way of your bikes. And you just put up, you know, we're having an event this, this Saturday, you know? Park your bike somewhere else.
As part of the CMAQ grant that we received, Director App, do, do they have to be permanently adhered?
Probably. There might be ways for us to have things that are mounted in such a way that they are more easily removed than necessarily being in like a cord, concrete footing for them so that they might be a little bit more removable.
So I always get confused about this. In terms of the building itself, the building is ours, right? So if we want to do this, we don't have to get the NSF.
Do we still have to go through preservation because it's on...
We would need to get preservation's approval, but I don't think...
But it's not external, it's not, it's not visible. Why, why would we need preservation to sign off?
It's a landmark.
But it's not an exterior improvement. It's something inside.
It's not inside.
You wouldn't even see it. Well, we can, we can cross that.
Right.
I guess for this purpose though, in terms of our budget, the CIP, are we okay? We can figure out this aspect of it, you know, later on. Are we okay with the numbers that we have here for the, the bike component so we can move forward? Okay. Thank you. Back on base.
Back. The next items that were asked to be presented in this board packet were the evaluation sheets for the vehicles. We included the ones for the fire department as well as the police vehicles in your packet. There is an updated, is it vehicle fifty-eight sheet that we put in front of you tonight? Fifty-two.
We're talking about the vehicles?
Yes.
Sorry. I, just looking at these data sheets in there, they were very helpful. I still have, I would still like to give some thought to the ambulance. It seems like, well, according to the sheet, it doesn't need to be replaced based upon the point total. I'm not sure that selling it for scrap value after putting seventeen thousand dollars into it is something I would do if I owned it. So I question really why we're doing that. Especially when the cost of a new one is two hundred and thirty thousand with a life of, what, eight years, which is thirty thousand a year roughly on average?
Correct. One of the reasons why it was put on the CIP this year was after reviewing the ambulance with our mechanic who deals with fire, fire vehicles and ambulances. It was his recommendation that we look at start to replace that vehicle due to the motor of the vehicle. The vehicle itself is in great shape. The motor is where he's finding the issues. And as he did the evaluation this year, he did say that within the next year, you're probably putting another twelve thousand dollars into that vehicle. He then looks at the reliability of the vehicle as well as it looks great and it's in great shape. When the motor doesn't work, the vehicle doesn't work, and that's where his concerns are. He does this, he's a certified emergency vehicle technician. He actually writes a test for the country. He's one of the instructors that, that does that. So when he came to me with this, you know, I look at him as being our eyes and ears of that ambulance and really evaluating it very well and knowing what to, you know, what he's looking at and how that vehicle's going to perform for us. And I know it is a lot of money.
How much would it cost to put a new engine in? That's not a fair cost.
One of the problems with that engine is, he said that when Ford designed that engine, they had flaws in it. And we were unfortunately one of the ambulances that it was put in, which is why he would go with a totally different model recommendation if we did purchase a new ambulance. As far as why we bought that model, I wasn't part of that committee when it was purchased the last time. But definitely referring it to him and having his input into what's the best motor out there, what's the best structure for an ambulance is very important.
But, but, I mean, we could put a new engine in though, right?
Yes. But his concern is it's going to have the same problems. Ford has had a lot of issues with those engines that are in those vehicles.
And there's not a compatible, that there's not a compatible engine that would not have those problems?
It's a, after talking about how he actually took that engine out of there the last time they had to work on it, they actually had to raise up the ambulance and drop the engine out from the bottom. It's not an easy engine to replace or work on. I could ask him if there is an alternative to that where we could replace the entire engine on the vehicle. It is definitely a possibility. But I would definitely like to refer to him on that one.
I mean, I'd be, I'd be curious to know how much it would cost to, if that's the issue.
Is this particular ambulance model still available?
No. We were, when they built our ambulances, when they built our ambulance, they had moved their factory from Indiana down to Florida. They only built twelve ambulances. Ours was one of the twelve.
So is there even engines available to, or they still make the engine?
Oh, they still make the engine. I'm sure we could find an engine. I would like to refer to him to see if it's...
So if the engine's still being made?
Correct.
Well, hopefully they, they've addressed the issues.
I would hope so. But I want to, I want to get his opinion on that also. That wasn't one of the questions I asked him about replacing the engine, but it is definitely something to talk to him about and, and look at.
But, so Chief, so, so the new, the new, the new, see, I, I think safety comes first. So, so the new, the new ambulance may only have, be the primary ambulance for eight years, but how long is the life expectancy for it to move down to the secondary? Because I think last meeting you said that there's a primary and a secondary?
Correct.
The primary's not working, it's another call?
We keep those in seven to eight year rotations. But his recommendation was that the older ambulance is in better shape than the newer ambulance as far as the motor goes.
I think we should look into that to see, see if it's feasible to actually just replace the engine. Because surely, it's almost like we're spending two hundred and thirty thousand dollars for an engine if, if the rest of, if the rest of the ambulance is in good shape. And even if, even if it costs, you know, forty thousand to replace the engine, then we, you know, we've got another good eight years of life out of it.
Well, once again, that's only the motor we're replacing. Our, what we've done in the past is every seven, eight years, replace the entire ambulance. So I would still ask the board then at that point to put this one down in the reserve, sell the reserve ambulance and still purchase a new ambulance. So that way we have a newer ambulance for the next eight years.
You'd ask, you'd ask that now or you'd ask that in eight years?
I would probably ask that now because with our rotation of the ambulance, we want to rotate it every seven, eight years approximately. And I know I'm saying that we want to keep our reserve, which is two thousand and three, even longer.
But why do, why do you want to replace it every seven, eight years?
Just due to the wear and tear on the ambulance. The reserve ambulance doesn't get used as often. It's used probably fifteen to twenty percent of the time.
You're losing me now. Looking at this, I thought what you just said was everything on this ambulance was in really good shape except the engine.
Correct.
So if we fix the engine, what's wrong with the rest of it?
Nothing.
So we could keep it for eight years?
Correct.
Maybe ninety-six, whatever, five, six, whatever the number is, four. But, but yeah, you're right. I mean, to me, if it, if it costs twenty-five to replace, that's a no brainer. If it's forty, then we think hard of it, but I think we need a little bit more information.
Yeah, we'll definitely consult with our mechanic and... Yeah, we'll definitely consult with our mechanic and get his opinion on that and have him look into replacement of the engine, a complete replacement of the engine.
And you might as well look at the transmission while he's at it. If you're going to replace the engine, you might as well replace the transmission. Okay, so where do we, we want to wait and get that information back before we?
I would like that, yeah. My, my, I guess my concern is, looking at this, maybe it's just a top-heavy year, but we're being asked to approve replacements for a third of the police vehicles and the ambulance. That's a lot for one year. And maybe that's a result of pushing them all off for a few years. But, you know, I also have a question on the Chevy Tahoe that's in here too. Again, from my perspective, if I was the owner, I would put the money into it because it looks like it's not worth much on a trade-in. If you put $6,000 back or $7,000 back into this Tahoe, you probably have a couple more years in it. Versus spending $48,000 for a new vehicle. So I understand the life safety implications here, but just putting my own ownership hat on, I'm struggling with this a little bit.
So Chief, do you want to address that?
Yeah, so actually 52 is in poor shape. That Tahoe, I talked to Rick when Riverside Garage did those evaluations, it's actually in worse shape than the CSO car. But we wouldn't, you know, I've already went to fail in Chevy, for example. And they, they gave us a bid for $10,000 for that car as a trade-in. We won't be, we'll be purchasing on the state bid. And what RZA does, or now is McCarthy, or RZA Ford, is they always match the state bid for us or come in $100 below to get our business. But they would give us the trade-in. And you have to remember that $48,000 takes in everything. It's not just the vehicle, it's the changeover, it's the striping, it's all the equipment changeover, which is expensive, the cameras, the computers. So the vehicle itself, the CMS, the central management services bids aren't out yet. But I, the Ford Explorers will probably come in about $28,000 on the state bid. Somewhere in that area. The Chevy Tahoe, probably between 30 and 32 on the state bid. And then we'll get the trade-in values, if that's what the village wants us to do. Because we already rolled down the one card to the fire department. And then I would take the, one of the Fords and roll that down to the CSO so that the fleet would be the new Chevy, or the new Ford and then a new Chevy. And you ask me, why don't I just go to Chevy or to Ford for both of them, which would be a really good question? But it's actually less expensive for me to shift, change out the Tahoe with a Tahoe because the Tahoe equipment doesn't fit in the Ford. I'd have to buy new light bars, I'd have to buy new prisoner cages, I'd have to buy the cages that are in the back of the car for the equipment. They don't fit in the Ford Explorer. So I don't think, if years pass by what we've been doing, the $48,000 is an encompassing number of everything that's done to the car. And I'd probably come back to the board in January or February if the board approved them with a lesser amount of that, because I'd be adding, I'd be taking off the trade-in we get for those vehicles.
I talked to Rick about this car, because I just can't, I couldn't, I mean, 2000, I mean, it just, it seems like four years old, it should have, he said it's in terrible shape. Because it's, he goes, it's, the oil is leaking, the ball joints, I mean, he went over, he went over a litney. He said the same thing, he goes, if you want to save money, keep the Crown Vic. He goes, but this one's in bad shape. He goes, it's just in bad shape.
He told, when I met with him, he said he'll probably need a new engine if we kept it for 2018. Which he estimated to be at least $6,000 at the dealership. Not, of course, the Riverside Garage. So.
Can I ask, do we know why this is in such bad shape? I mean, it sounds like to me, obviously, each car is different, goes through different, every day has a different experience. But I'm just wondering if there's anything that this one has gone through specifically that?
It's gone through, well, remember, it's 24 hours a day, seven days a week. It's driven by three different officers. So each officer, there's a midnight officer, a day shift officer, 3 to 11, they drive differently. So the driving skills or the driving, the way they handle that is different. But it's just a constant heavy use. The vehicles are rarely turned off. Because when we shut the vehicles down, everything's shut down. So sometimes if you see the vehicle running and you're like, well, what was that car parked behind the police station for 15 minutes and we didn't shut it off? It's because the manufacturer recommends that we don't because it powers down everything in the car. The computers, the squad car cameras. And then when the officers have to go back and start and go to a call, that isn't even booted up by the time they get to the call. So most of the time, the car's running, actually running. So it does have a lot of idle time and it has a lot of wear and tear just from the driving. And remember, those cars, that car is used every single day, every single shift. 52. So it is, it is in poor shape. It does have engine problems, that's a manufacturer's, that Chevy Tahoe, I don't. If you talk to Rick, he'll tell you it leaks oil, we have it in there all the time. It has some serious engine problems. So actually, on paper, 52, or 58, looks worse than 52. And that's really 50, the 52, that Chevy Tahoe is actually in worse shape. Although 50, 58 is in pretty bad shape too, but. So, I mean, I would be, we would probably come in under that. And we'd also be using the fine money that's assigned to that account. So that ticket fine line item that we have, which at least last time I checked was about $86,000, is, would be used towards the purchase of the vehicles.
But I still haven't heard an answer to Mr. Sebby's point though. If, even with what we're discussing, if we could put $8,000 into this car and we got two more years of life out of it.
It's a no-brainer.
Why, why wouldn't we do that?
I don't think we'd get two more years. I think if you suck $6,000 minimum into the engine and then there are other maintenance that would be scheduled with that, with the 24-hour service, I don't, it's my belief we would not get that amount of service and that we would not constantly be having that done for maintenance.
Well, I'm, but I'm looking at the sheet you gave us. And the sheet you gave us shows if we repair what needs to be repaired, it's $7,680.
That's today.
That's today.
Yes, today. You don't know what's going to be six months from now.
And remember, the cost of the vehicle to purchase new, just the vehicle itself, is approximately $28,000. So essentially, you're almost investing a third of the cost into an aged vehicle.
I guess that's why I'm struggling, why is it in the budget for $48,000 then? What I just heard is it's.
Well, it's in for $48,000, and correct me if I'm wrong, we put that in there all inclusive of everything changeover. I don't include the trade-in because I don't know exactly what I'm going to get. But every year, I usually come back to the board and get an actual trade-in sheet that comes with my packet. And then the check that we actually cut for that vehicle is usually less than what I've asked for in the $48,000 based on the trade-in. And every year we've done the trade-in, I mean, we could, I bid it, you know, that's something. But that's a little bit more encompassing on us because by law, then we have to take the striping off. We can't sell it as a police car.
Yeah, but, yeah, but, see. You're saying 48, you're saying 28.
For the vehicle.
Yeah, I get it, but, but what we're talking about is the money. We're spending taxpayer money. And if we, if we can put $8,000 into the car and keep it for another two years, I agree with Mike, I just don't see why we wouldn't do that. And from, and what our mechanic is telling us is that it can be fixed. Now, if Rick says, if Rick says you're throwing it down a hole, that this car is going to, even if you put all this new stuff in, it's still no good, that's different. But that's not what the data is that we have.
I mean, I would, I would recommend, then you should go talk to Rick. Because Rick, Rick told me that the car is not worth putting the money into it. He goes, even after you have this, he goes, there's ball joints, there's tires. He goes, the car is just, he goes, it's just one of those cars. I'm just.
But isn't that, isn't that part of the sheet? Did Rick do the sheet?
He did.
Yes, Rick.
That's what, that's what he has now. You know, he sees, he's looking at the car and he sees the future of the car. Not everything on that sheet is listed that he can see, but he.
I think we have a problem with our sheet then. I mean, then there's, I mean, well, one of two things has to change. I mean, what I'm hearing is, if we have $48,000 in the budget, we're going to get a $10,000 trade-in and we're going to be able to reuse a lot of the equipment on the existing vehicle. To me, that math is more like $30,000, not $48,000 we should have in the budget.
I mean, the changeover is very expensive. Even though we're using the same equipment, for the company to come in and remove all the equipment from one car to another typically runs between $10,000 and $12,000 to have all that done.
Which then I go back to, then let's put the money into the vehicle.
President Sebby?
Yes, please.
I'm sorry.
One fact you're not hearing much about is the issue of reliability. You know, if we put $8,000 into the car, yeah, makes sense we'd want to keep it. But are we going to have any comparable faith in the car's reliability in terms of, in an emergency, performing what it, the way it needs to perform?
Well, there'd be, it has to perform in the winter, it has to perform in the summer. Certainly, our insurance carrier who comes out and, you know, used the car would want us to have a reliable vehicle, what they would consider reliable. But, I mean, these are heavy-use vehicles. Some cars, I can't explain why one car might be really good for five or six years and the other squad that we buy off the state bid too, you know, has a lesser life of three or four years. Sometimes it's just the mechanics of the vehicle. They're, they're coming off the same line. I mean, you know, Chevy builds their police products and Ford builds theirs. So I don't, sometimes I can't, it's like, I guess if you get your own car, sometimes, sometimes you get some that are lemons and some that are, and Ford are being made here in Chicago. And, you know, maybe there's an answer. So I know the board wanted me to look at green vehicles and I did that yesterday. So I have an update on that too for the future. But for right now, I think 52 seeking a lot of money, mechanical money in the 52, I'm not, I'm not confident that I'd have a worthy vehicle for two years.
If I wanted to save, and I do, but if I was going to pick something, I would replace the Tahoe and keep, and defer.
Yeah, I would, well, I also had the conversation with Rick and he said the same thing he did to Trustee Ballard, that 52 is in worse shape than 58.
Keep the, keep the Crown Vic.
Yeah, well, and the Crown Vic also is only, is used less because it's a CSO car. It's not 24 hours a day, it's eight hours a day.
And I would rather see the CSO car than in a rotation when you do another Tahoe. And I understand the towing issues and things like that, but we have a lot of vehicles in town if we need to.
And I appreciate this data. I guess I am relying on the data and I assume this was the data that was going to repair a vehicle to be reliable. So I, I don't know what these numbers are, if this is what it costs to repair, but it's still not reliable. I don't know what good that does, frankly. I know they're not your numbers, but that's, when I finally thought I had to figure out a scientific way of evaluating this, I'm told to ignore the numbers, it's, this is what the experts say.
Well, the way, you know, and the way I read the policy is, and I gave these sheets right to Rick. We gave them to him, said evaluate them, give them back to us, he faxed them back to us. But I think the written policy says if it's over 11 points, that that's when the board and the manager considers it for replacement. At least that's what I was going on from the actual written policy for the fleet maintenance. I'm not saying there's a guarantee, it just said that's when we should come to the board, is when there are 11 points or more, is what I interpreted the policy.
And I guess what I would like to see, I would, you know, if we could consider getting some more out of the CSO car, I would love to see that. And I'd maybe like to see a little bit more precision on the replacement of these instead of the full cost and then we always come in $5,000 less. I think I'd prefer to see it that way.
And we've been doing it long enough that we know, you know, that we can put real numbers in here.
I mean, at least some trade-in, you can put some cushion on a trade-in. But some trade-in, I think, should be included in these numbers.
And I will go ask Rick. Because I, I mean, it's, I just feel like, and I've felt this for a long time, I just feel like we are, we're too quick just to buy new stuff. And of course it has to be reliable, that's, that's, that's the first consideration. But I think, I think Mr. Sebby makes a good point. And if you look at this in terms of what you would do with your own car, now granted this, we don't have a police car or an ambulance, it's a family car. But, you know, if you can put, if you can put $8,000 in, if, I mean, if Rick said you could put $8,000 in this car and it would be reliable, reliable car for two years, it seems to me that makes far more sense than spending 48. You know, and, and yet, for some reason, we don't, that doesn't seem to, we're too quick. And I agree, if, you know, if we can't depend on these sheets, then they're worthless. I mean, that was the whole point of having this system, is that you could actually provide data to us to show us when something was really needed to be replaced instead of just doing it by road. Which is what, kind of what we used to do. And so if, if I can't depend on the data I'm given, I can't make decisions. So we need to, if nothing else, we need to fix that. We need, we need to have, we need to have good information.
This is a policy that the American Public Works Association utilizes. Director Bailey can provide some additional feedback relative to this. But if the board sees that these evaluations aren't helpful, then maybe we should come back with a different policy because obviously this took a lot of staff time to evaluate.
Well, that's, that's fine and good. But what I'm seeing is in front of me is a report that says if I spend $8,000, I fix what's wrong with this car. And then I'm being told that that's not right. Because somebody wouldn't talk to the guy and he says, yeah, the car's no good. Well, if that's the case, then this report is wrong.
That's my issue.
One or the other is wrong. And all we can do is go by what we're given. And this is what we were given. So if the real answer is 52 is getting ready to fall apart, get rid of it as quickly as you can, that's what this should say. And it doesn't. So. So where are we at on this? Where are we, are we leaning toward keeping the 58?
I would like to keep 58 and reduce the budget cost for 52. At least by some reasonable trade-in amount, if nothing else.
So, what's everyone else saying?
I tend to agree with that. I mean, I think there's a distinction between patrol vehicles that are out on the street versus a community service officer vehicle that is less likely to be in an emergency situation. And those types of cars, unless I'm reading that wrong, it's what I think I'm hearing. So, yeah, I would tend to agree. The CSO car doesn't have nearly the same amount of equipment in it as one of our regular parole vehicles. So it really doesn't do all the idling as much as the other main.
No, it's only used, right now it's five days a week, eight hours a day. The CSOs don't work weekends. It has the same equipment because we just roll down the squad car. And we keep it in so they can put dogs in the car, they can keep the cage in there and stuff. But it doesn't have the same amount of patrol time, that's correct.
And the, the CSO car, I'm making an assumption here, tell me if this assumption is correct. Isn't responding to emergencies, or is it?
He's not, he responds to calls, but his are non-emergency calls.
Would it be too much to ask if a revised report could be issued that at least in the other considerations identifies the ball bearings and things like that?
Ball joint.
Sorry.
It's all ball joints.
See, but that's what I understand, because he's addressing steering and suspension in here. So that would be part of that.
It's in there.
It's in there. It's just steering and suspension.
Yeah.
I'm just saying if there is, you know, we could, more for record-keeping for the future. Because if this is going to be the policy moving forward, having a report that says, these are the things that are coming up, this is why the car is no good. And then justifying our, our position of actually, I agree with you, you know, moving forward with, with putting in something for the budget, but maybe a slightly reduced with trade-in. But in the future, we can look back and say, this is what, you know, this is what we were accounting for, this full description, and we can make those same sort of calls in the future for.
I think the only problem with that is we're only seeing these sheets for ones that are being recommended to be replaced. So we'll never see the.
So where's the, where's the line, I guess?
Yeah, so we, I mean, I guess ideally, you know, we do this report for every vehicle on an annual basis. I don't know how much goes into this or, I'm not even suggesting we do that. But I was hoping to build that type of database too, but.
Right.
It would provide the data we need.
Okay, so I think we're okay.
Don't we keep this on an ongoing basis on all of, all our vehicles?
It was my understanding that this was done on every vehicle.
That's why we have that computer, right?
We don't do an evaluation for them individually. So inclusive in the packet is the actual detail for the work order and the different repairs, oil changes, et cetera, for the various police vehicles that were included. So this information is collected, but it's on an ongoing basis as the repairs are occurring.
Right, so we would have it for every vehicle in our fleet?
Correct, but we don't do these. Correct, but we don't do these forms until we believe it's, it's to the point of being replaced.
But if, if, if one, if one wanted to, one could easily print out the repair history for the past year for police vehicle number 55, even though it's not on a schedule for the rotation, so you can, that wouldn't, that wouldn't be a, I mean, I think the time-consuming part is, is doing this, but just printing out the report wouldn't be difficult to do, and, and so the trustees can have and look at it, and see what's, what's been done, what has been, I, I think that's what you're getting at, am I correct?
Well, and also, I thought this was supposed to help be a predictive software. You know, we, we were supposed to, so that we could, we could look at, at our entire fleet, and, and have some idea, okay, you know, based on these numbers, next year it looks like this vehicle is, is going to be in trouble. And then, you know, two years out, it looks like this one might be, I mean, that, I thought that was the whole point of having the, the software, was so we could, we could have a running account. Because, you know, I mean, this is a major expense. These vehicles are a major expense to this village. And, and it always has been. So, anything we can do to, to lessen this cost is, it's incumbent upon us to do. And it is time-consuming, but...
I, I don't see, you know, I don't see putting data we have into this sheet being all that time-consuming. I really don't. I don't, I don't see that. It's hard for me to believe that. It's mileage, it's hours, it's age, and it's an estimate of repair cost. And how many vehicles do we have?
We paid for the evaluation from Riverside Garage on the status of the vehicle. So, there's a cost to us each time.
So, then this, okay, and I don't, I don't see the value in this system.
Wouldn't, wouldn't he do that when he does?
Doesn't he do maintenance work? Don't they do?
Wouldn't he do that when he, when you bring, if you bring a, a police vehicle in for oil change, doesn't he go through and say, hey, you know, this is so-and-so, so-and-so, so-and-so? I mean, he does that to me on my car. He says, you know, you gotta, you know, you gotta be looking for new tires pretty soon, you know? So, I, you know, he does that for me. I'm sure he does that for us. I mean, for, for those too, I mean, so...
And to get our business, I would think that's, again, not a tremendous amount of work.
I think the real work is in these data sheets that you were talking about. So, that's, that's the input.
The input?
Yeah, so you could, well, when Director Bailey purchased that, and he went for it. Now, we can go ahead and put every single purchase order, or every single maintenance that's included in there, into that sheet. So, I, once Riverside Garage gets us those, we download them, and we have an officer that puts them into the database. So, that, that's, that, that's the real staff time for us, is the actual download of the data, not the sheet that Rick, Rick or Larry fills out.
But Rick, Rick or Larry, when they have it in their database too, okay, you could just ask them to print out per, per car, and attach that to the file. We don't have to necessarily, I mean, I guess if we wanted to make, I mean, I, I would hate to have a patrol officer inputting oil changes. It just seems like it's duplicating what, what's on their system. So, I'm, I, you know, I, I think Rick and Larry has the same basic thing. You tell them, what'd you do to this car? And he can print it out pretty easily.
Can they though?
I don't, I don't know.
Yeah, I wouldn't go that far. They have a pretty manual system to the...
There's a little more thing. They actually got a kid sitting behind a computer now. I, I, I don't know. I don't, I don't know. But he's, he's giving me some interesting information on the cars. So, I'd like to go and talk to him about it.
Maybe I don't. So, we have these work orders. As work is done on, on our, all the vehicles in our fleet, the, the work that's being done is input into these sheets. Is there an ongoing analysis done, keeping track of, of where the vehicle is, and when it's approaching the end of its useful life? Who does that analysis, in terms of deciding, you know, we've gotten to the point now with this particular vehicle, that based on the work that's been done, we think, we think we might need to replace it? Who, who does that analysis?
Well, right now, so, and I won't speak for Director Bailey, maybe he could come up and talk. But when we put our data in, you'll see at the bottom of the sheet, it might come up with a number like $10,000. So, that's what we've put in thus far. And then, when, when we want to replace it, the vehicle's getting old, or it's getting where we don't think it's useful, then I go to Riverside Garage, give that sheet to Larry or Rick too, most times it's Rick, ask him to evaluate that on the sheet, the other sheet. He evaluates that, turns it back to me. But he, he also gets this data sheet here. Okay, some of the stuff isn't from Riverside Garage, so if there's warranty work done, you'll see a different, you'll see Ford on here. But that, that's as far as the, this report printing out something that says, okay, chief, or whoever that, it is according to the formula in this program, the car's up for replacement. I'm not aware that it produces anything like that. It's really a tracking device of what maintenance you've put into the car thus far, and what the dollar amount that you've put into the car for maintenance.
Because prior to that, we really had no tracking mechanism that compiled all of this data other than things that were processed through accounts payable, and didn't provide the level of detail that we currently have.
So, so at some point, we'll take these work order details and give them to, to the mechanic, and say, okay, here's, here's a record of what's been done to this car. Give us your best estimate of whether this car should be replaced or not.
That's what we did. He got our sheets this time when he did it. And then we gave him that scoring sheet that the trustees were speaking up to, and asked him to evaluate it and give it back to us.
Any other questions about vehicles, right?
And how many, is there any, is there any police vehicles that are backup?
Well, if you remember, we have one vehicle that's an unmarked gray. We bought that on a grant, if you remember that. That's a Ford Explorer. That car is not utilized as much, but of course, we're bound by the grant. So, that grant was purchased with DUI funds, if you remember. We purchased that car many years ago. You might see it around town. It's completely unmarked. It's got all the lights on the inside. So, we use it for traffic details. That car has much less wear and tear and miles, but the entire, everything in that car was paid for on the, by the DUI funds. So, that car is, I mean, I would guess that car is like 25,000 miles on it right now. That's my guess. I could go look.
But my, my point being, is, let's, if 52 has the issues that it has, and it blows an engine on a Friday night, what is, what, what is our backup plan for those officers?
Use the CSO car.
Because that's not a good backup plan.
That's what they do now.
Right.
Yeah, they use the CSO.
That's, that's, that's why I think that when you, when you get to something that has, you know, engine issues to the point that this car has engine issues and oil, we can't take the risk of it, of it blowing on a Friday night.
That's one reason we don't, we don't take the striping off that CSO car. We just add community service officer to it, because many, many times, that car is used as the backup.
I don't think that's, so I think is, and, and the answer to that policy is have a backup. I don't want to do that. So, I, I, that's why I, I would say that I would rather replace this car, because the way I understand, the way I, I mean, if Rick told me what he told me about my car, I would replace it. I would rather replace this car, and then, and then leave the CSO's car as is. Because I think we really need, our frontline vehicles really need to be dependable and reliable. But that's...
Everybody agree with that?
Could I ask the trustees what their thought is on the roll-down? Because that's on my budget too, for, you remember, we gave one car to the fire department. So, I had a proposal in there to roll down my car to the deputy chief, which that car went to fire department. I had $40,000 budgeted for that. My car would probably be a little less. And I say that because we buy what's called an administrative car. It doesn't have any of the fancy stuff that the patrol cars have, yet it's still a state bid. It's just a little bit, it's usually just a little bit less than that. And we would, we would be using the fine money, which is the money that's from tickets. So, that, that money is from people that we issue citations to. The village gets a $5 or $7 just for that fun, in addition to what the village gets for fine money. So, that, that account that we saw the money for is, is a special account just for law enforcement to purchase equipment and vehicles. And it doesn't go against the fine money that the village collects for tickets. It's a separate fine assessed to offenders.
So, if we, if we purchased 52 and a new administration, administrative vehicle, well, we would basically be taking really no money out of our CIP. It would be actually coming out of the fine money, which is kind of like the Quonah Quon enterprise fund. We'd be servicing not only the police, but we'd also be taking out, that Crown Vic had 110,000? Yeah, 110,000 miles on it, which...
Yes. And the car we rolled down to the fire department had around 70?
It's actually at 110,000. The other car is at 56,000.
So, that's the Ford, Black Ford Taurus.
I think all that makes sense.
Yeah, I agree. So, we're okay with that?
Well, I'm up there, just so I, I wanted to make sure I hit the trustees. They asked me about the green vehicles.
I was just going to ask.
I want you to know that yesterday was the Illinois Police, Chief's Police Expo in Timely Park, actually Wednesday, Thursday. Ford was there, so was Chevy. Ford will have their hybrid squad out in 2020. It is scheduled to be produced in 2019, and then tested by the Michigan State Police. They do all, Michigan State Police do all the testing for police vehicles. And this includes community service officers and any others. The manufacturer was there. What they said about these vehicles is they're changing the name from the Ford Taurus to the Ford Responder, which is nothing more than a cool name for a police car. But it's, the way it's going to work is, they're going to roll the car out to like New York and LA in 2020 or 2019 for testing, and then back to the state police. And how it's going to operate is, it will run on the battery when it idles. They expect it to be more money upfront. They, you know, they're, so some of the chiefs were complaining about what the price is. But they're hoping that you get money back from the amount of gas you put in and stuff. No guarantee, because it's going to be their first model out, but they will have production models available by 2020. You'll see it out being tested in 2019. There currently are no hybrids available for police vehicles that you couldn't just go buy off the showroom floor. But I did want the trustees to know that I did look into that. I did stop at the booth yesterday, and I did talk to the manufacturer. So, it will be out in the future.
To be continued.
Yes.
Can I ask though about this DUI vehicle?
Yes.
Is, is there a creative solution to actually use that more rigorously? I mean, I know we got it for a grant. I know it was restricted. But is it possible to look at a defensible replacement cost of that vehicle and reimburse the, the, the funding for that, and then use it for, for?
There's no way to re-infund, reimburse the grant, because what it is, is so when we make these DUIs, the, the village gets 100, $200 or $300 on the convictions. It goes into a fund. Actually, we have like $15,000 in that fund. It keeps replenishing itself. So, we purchased this vehicle and everything in it on that fund. So, there's a state statute for that fund that says, this is what you can buy, A, B, C, and D, and you can use in there. Outside of that, it's for traffic enforcement. Can I, can an officer take the car for eight hours and go out and do traffic enforcement? Yes. Would I want to do something that would blur the lines? No. Because we've already been audited twice by the state for the purchase of those vehicles. And I want to make sure that I stay directly in line with what the guidelines are, because the last thing I want to do is run a file of the, of the auditors that come and audit us on our paperwork. So, right now, we use that for special traffic enforcement, DUI enforcement, stop sign enforcement, speed enforcement. It's not just for DUIs. It was just purchased by DUIs, but the statute said it has to be used for traffic enforcement. So, it, it can be out on patrol if the officer is doing traffic enforcement. And then we have a little, we have a chart where we note the time and date, and what officer was in there, and how much miles. So, when we get audited by the state, we have the documents they want. So, and I've heard horror stories from other chiefs who have used it not in compliance with that statute. It's not really the grant. It's the Illinois statute. And they've got, you know, it's, the municipality has gotten some hot water.
And I'm not suggesting, I'm not suggesting we misuse it. I'm suggesting, if we say the trade-in value is worth $10,000, I'd rather give $10,000 to the state, reimburse them for their grant. This is the value of this vehicle. Now, we can use it for whatever the heck we want.
Well, they won't allow us to do that, because it's fine money. It's not grants. So, what happened is, we got like $200 for a DUI conviction, and we made 130, I mean, 130 DUIs one year. We got $200 times 132 DUIs, and then the next year. So, it's, it's a fine assessed to this account that the state holds that comes to us. So, it's, we didn't have to apply for the grant. The money's just held in an account here from the fine money, from the fines for the DUIs. And we continue to get that now. Every DUI conviction, we get money. I, I would say there's probably between $10,000 and $20,000 currently in the new, being added to it. So, when this, if we used every single penny on these two cars that the village may approve here, the, the account will still keep going next year. It'll still keep generating money. The only way it won't generate money is we make no DUI arrests. And the state just raised it. So, it's now $500 on it. You get $500 for a DUI crash. So, if an officer goes handles a drunk-driving crash, and makes an arrest where people are hurt, we get $500 from the conviction instead of $200. So, you know, that theoretically, that fund could replenish quicker than it has in the past. Which I think is a good thing, because it was meant to alleviate general, the, the legislators passed that, so it gives some relief for general fund paying for squad cars. Some relief. So, I, I think that's a good thing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jay.
Thank you.
Those were the main additions to the CIP in front of you. Any other questions about the plan?
I would just draw attention under the additional items to consider when we get more into the, the budget discussions. I mean, we do need to start implementing some of the findings from the traffic safety study. I think when we went through it last time, I think our, the general consensus was that we kind of wanted to look at that Woodside Corridor first, in, in terms of whether we want to do sheroes or boxing, you know, striping, that kind of thing. There was some consideration about whether we wanted to address the, the turn, you know, from, after you come on 31st over to Aitkinside. So, I would just encourage you to consider, keep this, that in mind. Maybe look back through that safety study, because we need to start prioritizing now and starting to budget the, these, these safety items. I think everybody knows that, you know, the, the traffic situation is increasing. So, we need to do something to address that.
Can I ask the chief of traffic, just so I, we don't hit you, I don't hit you with this. Something that I would hope that you could think about is, what President Sells was alleviating to is, to, you know, when, when that traffic study, you saw how much traffic goes down North Della Plain between Woodside and, President Snack came in here and spoke about how they, they're cutting across to, to get off of 26th Street. They cut across to Long Common, go up Long Common, get up Harlem.
Yes.
One, I think through, through several emails, one resident actually proposed the idea of putting a no-left turn between 4 and 6, and, and 9, and whatever, just like we have on line out, where you would be, you couldn't turn up Della Plain off of Woodside between particular times. Just, I, something that, you know, you would...
So, where, where it jogs off, you could go straight on Aitkinside, but you couldn't make the turn to go on Della Plain?
You couldn't turn on Della Plain. You could go straight on Aitkinside, because we don't want to stop people from going into downtown. And you can go straight on Woodside. So, you could still go into downtown. So, if your business is in downtown, you can still go into downtown. But if your business is just cutting through Riverside to get to Long Common, and get out of Long Common onto Harlem Avenue, that we would, that we would be able to stop. And I think the numbers from that traffic study showed that there was a considerable amount of traffic on that strip of land. And I've actually started driving, when I, when I go over to, to Loyola in the morning, instead of coming down Della Plain, I actually come through Mishaw, and kind of come out at that little jot there, and try to enter onto Della Plain. And it is truly amazing how much traffic is going like this. I'm always stuck at that stop sign for, for a while. So, I, just something that I, I would like you to think about.
About maybe, you know, bringing that up with our, with our engineer, looking at that for similar to line out, like 4, 7 to 9, or 4 to 6?
Well, I don't, you know, I think our engineer is done, right? I, I, personally, I think those are the ideas our engineer should have been giving to us, but that's another story. But that's, that's, but you're, you're, you're our engineer now, so...
I can go, I can go look at it. I think, I think to do that, we'd have to get, you know, clear, clear signage. We might even have to do some roadway markings, because you know, when you're coming, what is it, south on the North Riverside side, or, when you're... south on the North Riverside side there, when you pass Edgewater, you come, you, you would either want the traffic to still go down Woodside or go down Aitkinside, not to be able to go down Della Plain, I think we'd have to have some type of roadway markings pushing everybody towards those other ways during certain times, or you're just going, or we'd have to have constant enforcement there 24 hours a day, so, although...
Four hours a day.
Four hours a day, but I really, you know, it's...
And we got that Tahoe that's not doing it.
But that's something I can, I can make a visit there and report back to the manager.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else?
Unless there's any other questions?
Any other questions about the memos that were provided? Okay, thank you very much, your friend. Does anyone have any new business this evening? We do not have a need for an executive session, so I'd ask for a motion of second to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Valerie, second by Mr. Pollock, please call the roll.
Trustee Pollock.
Aye.
Trustee Jesus.
Aye.
Trustee Valerie.
Aye.
Trustee Sette.
Aye.
Trustee Peters.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned, thank you, good night.